Okay, we were called to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council Meeting for Monday, April 15th, 2024. I would ask that you all please rise for brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we gather in the beginning of the summer season, or the coming of the summer season, we are ever mindful in the call to our attention, the number of nice amenities that Batavia has specifically along the river for people to enjoy. In this past weekend, it was very obvious that hundreds, if not several thousand, people came down to downtown Batavia for a variety of reasons and walked the Riverwalk and enjoyed all the amenities. And we're ever thankful for those who were on the city council before us, who took the wisdom and the vision to put together the building that we now enjoy as our city hall and police department. Now, this was a very controversial decision when it was done. There was a lot of opposition to it, but today, I think that obviously history has shown it to be a wise move. Also tonight, we want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. And I just ask for the special blessing to be showered on each of these men and women as they go about their vital missions. And as also, we want to ask for understanding and vision and perception by the members of the city council as they act on the items of business before us. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Would like to do the pledge. Anybody want to volunteer? Alderman.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Berkeley's call the roll.
Barazza, here. Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Peeper.
Here.
Chanset.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Solfa.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malay.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Serone.
Vocal singer.
Here.
Twelve present, two absent.
Ms. President, you can do your business. Thank you. Reminder, if you're going to address the city council, we ask that you please come forward and use the podium with the microphone. Our meetings are being recorded and will be broadcast live and then subsequently on tape on BATV. If you don't use the microphone, people watching on TV can't hear you or know what's going on. So it's imperative that you do use the microphone. Moving to item five, items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Does anybody in the city council have anything? All right, moving to item six, the consent agenda. Alderman, Chanset, you have this tonight?
I do. Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows. To accept and place unfilled, committee of the whole minutes for March 12th, 2024. Historical preservation commission minutes for March 11th, 2024. Building reports, March 2024. Approvals, the April 12th, 2024, payroll in the amount of $1,101,523.26. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $1,177,801.3. Ordinance 24-05, text amendment to the zoning code to allow certain uses as a conditional use in the MU mixed-use district. Resolution 24-59-R, request for an extension of the expiration of final plat for Deer Path and Main consolidation subdivision regulations. Resolution 24-57-R, authorizing execution of a contract with Denler, Inc. for the 2024 roadway crack filling project. Resolution 24-62-R, approving permanent easement agreement with Batavia Park District and the Geneva Park District for permanent easement at the Carriage Crest Park for the purpose of installing and maintaining stormwater management infrastructure. Resolution 24-58-R, authorizing execution of an I dot resolution to appropriate MFT funds for the 2024 roadway crack filling project. Resolution 24-56-R, authorizing execution of a memorandum of understanding with Moose International, Inc. relating to sanitary sewers. Resolution 24-61-R, approving a contract with Carlisle Utility Contractor to perform 35 KV underground circuit upgrade in the industrial area along Douglas Road in the amount of $69,996, which includes the 10% contingency amount. Ordinance 24-32, rising Title IV, Chapter V, solid waste collection and city curb sign collection programs. Ordinance 24-33, amending the text of the zoning code, Chapter 4.1, site regulations, Section 4, 106, refuse and recycling enclosures. Ordinance 24-34, amending the text of the zoning code, miscellaneous amendments, Chapter 2.3, 2.4, 2.6, and Chapter 6. And Resolution 24-60-R, authorizing execution of a fire department staffing study. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the proclamation, approve the consent agenda as that's read.
Second. Motion second for the approval of the items on the consent agenda. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Barazza.
Yes.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Solfa.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Twelve guests, no, no, two absent.
Consent agenda is approved. Okay, moving to item seven, matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Does anybody want to speak to us for something? If you'd come up, please, and use the microphone. Give us your name and address, if you could, please.
Hello there. Hear me okay? All right. My name's Brian Shutey. I live at 37W 829 Pine Needles Court in Batavia. Batavia mailing address, at least. Well, first, I'd like to thank city of Batavia for the opportunity to speak here and committee members for the help. Laura Newman has been helpful in kind of directing me and where to go and navigating stuff. Batavia website, recently have been using it quite a bit just for information and the utilities that you guys have put together and information is really outstanding for the surrounding areas. So that's been absolutely great help to me and also the opportunity to get up and talk, Little background, why I'm standing up and talking to you all tonight is about the Skyline Drive Connection Project. And I know that recently we've created an agenda, well, an agenda item has been placed for next month on the 14th for a committee of the whole hearing for it. But I wanted to come tonight and address you all from the standpoint that on that same night that we're going to be having an agenda item to discuss that matter, there's also an agenda item to award the contract and move forward with that project. And really to make it, you know, clear that the residents of Spring Green subdivision and from best as we can tell, all of the neighboring subdivisions feel very strongly about the project, the direction that it's heading, and that it's more than likely the wrong direction for the particular subdivision. Once again, you know, there's an agenda item later, so I don't want to get into a lot of details with you tonight, but the timing made more sense to at least stand up and tell you that, you know, we all feel very strongly about this project within the neighborhood and ask that you give it some thought. The scope of the project is actually very small by Batavia standards. The budgeted item for it is only $150,000, which is extremely small, given the scope of usually a main project that is happening for the city on any given year or any of the other budget items for 2024. I think because it is such a small item, you know, maybe less thought has gone into the actual where the rubber meets the road of it. And that's been something that we had no knowledge of within the subdivision or surrounding subdivision seemingly until about the first week of April. And it's been within the past few weeks that that's been the main topic of discussion with all of the neighbors is have you heard what's going on? And kind of trying to figure out, and once again, you know, thanking Batavia website for just the wealth of information that, you know, you can garner from that. Basically, that's the main position I think a lot of people take with this project in general, is that it makes perfect sense on paper. Skyline should connect. It's named Skyline to the north. It's Skyline to the south. For some reason, they didn't connect it. It just so happens about 20 years ago, when they were putting in that subdivision, all of the, many of the same people who are here tonight from that Spring Green subdivision all came when they caught wind that it was going to connect with very good reasons why it should not be connected. And those reasons are still in place today. And once again, the details for a later day. I'd just ask that everybody in the council, as it is a small item, take it very seriously and really read the communications and things that are coming out of the neighborhood. I've drafted an email. I've sent it off to everybody. I know a few other people have been, you know, as soon as they hear about it, they're not waiting until the 14th to do something about it next month. They're getting involved now and saying, what can be done here because this doesn't make sense for us. If there's any questions or comments, I'd be happy to address them. I plan on actually sticking around until afterwards. If I can be available or, you know, of any help for anything, then feel free to approach me and, you know, we can discuss anything, so.
Chanset, you?
I just do have one question. And I hear this kind of concern, I've heard this concern before. I just have to ask you to go home and think about this. If everybody had the same exemption, what would traffic look like on the feeder roads and the primary roads that feed your subdivision? The net result would be snarls and traffic, and we would not be doing our job. I can tell you as a body, we spend hours talking about $60,000 stamped concrete and the appropriate amount of time on everything that we do talk about. So just rest assured, this committee definitely does do its homework. I do 20 to 25 hours a week of reading before I get to the meetings so I can come prepared as best as I can, even if I'm late. But the bottom line is, and I'm not trying to be funny here, I would have just assumed that that road would connect someday if I bought my house and I saw there was a similar named road down the way, for the same reason that if you buy a house and there's corn behind it, it's not always going to be corn if the person sells their land. And I empathize, I understand all the safety concerns and whatnot, but the connections of neighborhoods is actually meant for safety. It's meant for connecting neighbors so they, it's more walkable. That's a part of the strategic plan, one of the most important parts of the strategic plan is to connect neighborhoods and whatnot. And so to isolate your neighborhood, it's not defensible.
If I could respond to that, I'd like to. So I 100% understand where you're coming from in terms of, if I may dive into it slightly deeper, you talked about safety and walkability and that sort of thing. The main issue, and I illustrated this in the email sent as well, is the infrastructure of the neighborhood that is Spring Green and Clover Hills is Geneva Township. And when it was built, it was built, well, Spring Green in the 70s and Clover Hills in the 90s, due to the same standard, which is rural residential. This means that we have a road, we have open ditches on either side, and about no more than a foot of gravel off of the road on every side. This also means that pedestrians, vehicles, and all bikes share that same road. And that's really the crux of concern within everybody from the neighborhood and surrounding neighborhoods, is that without the same infrastructure that exists within Windermere, it actually does more harm than good to mix more traffic with all of those other elements.
So you mentioned at the beginning, you know the date of the committee meeting?
Yes, next month on the 14th.
Right. And that's the night you need to bring your group down with all your information because that's when this thing gets into the conversation of all these aldermen. That's, so I appreciate.
And I understand that right now, it's not at the top of anybody's mind. You have plenty of time to look at it. The one extra reason I wanted to address you tonight is purely from the standpoint that on that same night, you're also awarding the contract to somebody who is going to continue doing that, that project.
That only happens after we have the conversation with you, and I don't know where it's going, but that, you know, things like that have changed. So I would encourage you to all be here on that night and be prepared to put on your program.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else in the audience on anything else?
I am Mary Kettleson. I live, I'm with the skyline. I'm a zero S 520 skyline driver. I'm at the, where all this is going. Just really quick, I understand your question. You guys are more than welcome to come and drive down that road when it's pitch black. There's two blind curves, there's a hill. I also have children who have to walk down that three blocks because, well, I guess it's blocks we measure it because the buses won't come up and turn around in the cul-de-sacs. So we have small children, again, and he said a foot on either side, there's not. And it's really, what really gets us is that we weren't notified at all, at all, as residents, that it was, I know back in the day, it was going to go through. Nobody talked to us. The only reason this came out is because you guys decided to go and start marking on April 1st, on April Fool's Day, not a good day. And we had to ask people who were out there measuring. Nobody notified us, which is, you know, which I don't find. And if this road was always meant to go through, then I still don't understand why Windermere and this road are not lined up, the skyline on both sides. It wasn't put in right. If it was going to go through, then it should have been done. Ours is the safety, and we are Geneva Township. And I have a little bird, and I know the bird, but I was being told now that if you guys do this and do your annexation, which you've done, $150,000 for Geneva Township to put another sign up and to block it off. And that's what we're going to encourage them to do. So you guys are going to spend that money to do this road, and they're going to block it off. So you guys might want to think about that because it's Geneva Township, and you're going to back up to it. Snow removal, everything is going to be affected because Geneva Township does not have a snow removal truck. We hire out people. It's going to be plowed 200 feet to the, over the top of a blind hill, and then it's going to be up to Geneva Township to plow. It's not, that's not safe. I mean, it's going to be a problem. And as a resident there, I was the person who started it the last time, 20 years ago, when we moved in and had to, and watched Windermere get built, and we were totally told it wasn't going to go through, we're going to leave it, we're going to leave it. And then you guys lined the roads up, you know, and people walk there every day. I can tell you right now, there's at least 50 people, children, dogs, bikes, who walk up that and love it. It's quiet, they can walk safely. Two lanes of traffic are not, it's not going to work. We have a party, we have to park on the road. That's going to make it one lane of traffic in the middle of cars on either side of the road. So I know that, like we said, I just think that it wasn't brought up in the right way.
Well, I would again encourage you to come back on the committee meeting where it's on the agenda, it's going to be heavily discussed, and that's the one you should make all your points.
And the point is, though, why we're saying it now also is because we were told that May 1st was the cutoff for when you guys sent your letter to Geneva Township that apparently they didn't get about the annexation. So I was told we only have till May 1st, and that meeting is after May 1st. So if that's been changed, again, if someone would like to notify the residents, that would be lovely so we know what's going on, and then everyone can be on the same page. But right now, no one's giving us, the only reason we got a letter from you guys is because I came to the last meeting and we happened to see somebody measuring. And then we got a letter dated the 2nd, and we didn't get it till the 6th for the neighborhood. And now, if you want us at the COW meeting, that's great, but then you need to tell us because we're told one thing, that May 1st is the cutoff, which is why we're here tonight because we were told May 1st that you guys could start construction. And I've met many people I've been talking to, and they're like, yeah, May 1st is going to start. So that's why we're here tonight, rather than going, waiting for that COW, because if that's what happens, then we're going to lose our timeframe. Because I heard it was a year from the annexation paperwork. So that's just my two cents, I understand. But like I said, you guys more than welcome to come drive it, come drive it on a Saturday afternoon and just see what we're, why we're really not, we're not wanting to connect. But it's just, it's safety issues. And if Geneva Township is going to be at handy to have to make all the safety corrections, which is also what I was told by the developmental people, they don't have the budget to do what needs to be done to make it safe for people to drive two lanes of traffic. So that is where our issue is. It's not, we don't want to connect because I talk to everybody who walks by. And that's why we're bringing it up now, because information's not being put out and disseminated in a proper form that everyone knows what's going on. No one knows what the right hand and left hand are doing, and they're not clapping together, they're missing. And so that's where our issue is. So that's why we're here. That's why I said, come visit, come drive, go on a nice dark night when there's coyotes, deer, we have everything, kids, dogs, people. So that's where we at. So I understand what you're saying, Mary, about the COW, but we need to make sure that we're covering because if we miss it, then we're going to be told, whoop, you're too late. So that's where we're coming from. So that's my.
The date, so.
Thank you very much. As long as I know it's going to be still effective, we're cool. Thank you so much. Thank you, council, for listening to us. Thank you. Oh, sorry. Any questions?
Thank you.
Smashing.
All right. I guess we don't have anybody else. Moving then to item eight, presentation wastewater treatment facility, phase two improvement status update.
Lot going on here. Can everybody hear me? Yes? I'm Jerry Ruth, 1214 Buttermuck Lane, just so everybody knows. I'm here to update everybody on the project we're doing down at the wastewater treatment facility. So here's an aerial of the project. Here's what we've been doing so far in March and April. So we still have bike path and road closures active. We've been, or the contractors have been installing bypass piping and connections around a major structure, the excess flow clarifier that has failed. So now that is fully bypassed, and we're preparing to demolish that structure that should happen over the next couple of months. Water and storm utilities, underground utilities going in on Water Street, Marco Drive, and Flynn Street. We've been cleaning and lining for a large diameter, 40-inch diameter storm sewer that was a sanitary sewer, but we're converting it to storm. We've been running overhead power lines and communication lines down into Duck Bank that we installed earlier. Comcast is probably going to be the last one off of those poles, and then we can take the poles out and start our demolition. Also doing underground piping and concrete work at two new structures, one for ultraviolet disinfection of the flow and one for our new headworks building. Jumping into some photos of our construction, this is us digging in the dirt down by the river for the new UV disinfection building. Had to dig down to intercept a 24-inch diameter pipe, which, I don't know if I can minimize this. There we go. This pipe, which is the final effluent from the treatment facility, it runs from south to north to the discharge location into the river. We're tying onto that line, intercepting the flow and running it through a channel that has UV bulbs in it that'll disinfect the flow. This is a picture of that excavation taken on April 8th, to give an idea of how close we are to the river there. At the headworks, which is right next to the building we constructed in phase one up at the north end of the site, this is in the location of the former Interfaith Food Pantry. Right next to that building, we're preparing the subgrade for our new building. We've gotten down to the subgrade, tested that, it proved out. Placed our base aggregate and underground utilities underneath that and started installing forms and rebar. There's going to be a whole lot of rebar pictures over the next few months, you're going to get tired of seeing it. And here's an aerial of that site, that portion of the site, you know, just coming out of the ground. Now, our underground utilities, we're not quite done with them yet. We should be done with them here in the next month to two months. The next month for underground utilities and the next two to three months for getting the site and roadway and bike path all completed. So here's a shot of looking both east and west on Flynn Street, where we installed water main and sanitary sewer, and we installed the storm sewer for that in phase one. So it's quite a hill to climb. Here's some of the work up on Pomarco Drive. This is essentially a widened spot in the road where there's a parking area for the former Pomarco building that was removed. We're installing some storm sewer through this lot. This is a picture up of the storm sewer utility work we did at the intersection of Water Street and Main Street. So as you can see, it's pretty crowded with all these new utilities going in. The contractor and our team and the city work together to resolve any conflicts because there's always conflicts as soon as you dip a bucket in the ground. Here's the overhead lines that were being run to Duck Bank, as you see in the left picture there. The right picture is a city utility truck getting ready to pull their 35 KV power lines through the Duck Bank. There's a few shots up on Water Street, where we are completed with our water main installation. We're still tying on the services, but that'll continue and be completed in April. And here's some aerials for you. This is the intersection of Water and Main Street on the left. It's mostly backfilled. The aerial on the right of the intersection of Water and Union still shows a pretty big excavation that has been backfilled. But this, like I said, this was taken about a week and a half ago. Here's the construction, again, week and a half ago, on Pomarco Drive. So we are definitely having an impact. And as I mentioned, the road and bike path closures are still active. This is, on the left, the picture of the barricade for guiding traffic coming off of 31 onto Main Street. And then the picture on the right is the intersection of Main Street and Water Street. Here we have a shot of the sidewalk closed picture on the left. This is the intersection of Water Street and Union. Those sidewalk closed signs are placed generally wherever the sidewalk has been removed or the sidewalk is approaching an area that is just gravel, no longer has asphalt. On the right, the picture is at the intersection of Water Street and Main Street facing south. An update on progress. To date, just under $730,000 for engineering, about $10,600,000 for construction, so for a grand sum of about $11.3 million for the project. Estimated progress is 21% based on the days remaining, and I'll touch on schedule here in a second. No change orders so far. Change order was just recently sent into the city for processing, so that'll probably be on the next meeting or two's agenda. No days, I think it's a total of $64,000. For a schedule update, I mentioned that the, the bike, or the offsite utilities will be done in July of this year. Bike path should be done by the end of June. The new UV building, new headworks, and new primary clarifiers are all part of the scope of this project, still retain their same dates from their original schedule from November 30th of last year. And so that is the update, and I'm sure you have questions, but if you don't, that's okay.
I have one.
Wolf?
Mainly with the bike path reroute and everything is, it's gotten nice out, there's been a lot more bike traffic. It's basically ignored the signs. I think we need to think about how we have signs out there and where they're placed. And then also, I talked to communications to try to, you know, go back and ramp up again on social media to talk about it so that it gets out there, that people avoid this area because it still is a major construction site. And there's been hundreds of bikes counted by a couple of residents in that area that have seen the flow change, especially as it's gotten really nice out.
gotten really nice out, just to keep people out of that area so that nobody gets hurt. So I don't know what signs have been moved. I haven't been through there, you know, as recently as today, but I heard that signage has been moved around a bit. And, you know, we really need to make sure that the road closed signs stay up there and to try to discourage the bike traffic through there.
Totally agreed on all fronts. We've had several conversations with the contractor about this specifically in our construction meetings. We have them every Wednesday. Every Wednesday, our trailer is on that we have the construction means is on Flynn, which is right next to the big dig that goes up the hill 20 feet. And we've seen bikers during our meetings running their bike up the mud hill. So sometimes the signage just isn't enough. So we have specifically in the areas where we have a lot of construction traffic and some businesses being affected physically barricaded, even that isn't enough sometimes. So we are doing our best. We are talking about it. We're trying to be vigilant. And I went to the site tonight and I have a couple of spots where I'd like to see the signs moved. So I'm conveying that to my team and the contractor tomorrow.
Want to make sure everybody's aware and that we do do whatever we have to do to try to get people not to go through there.
Yes.
Just to clarify, when the bike path is complete, will it then be open to through traffic or will it still be closed due to adjacent construction?
It'll be open to through traffic. So the bike path completion may not align perfectly with the restoration and landscaping and things like that that may need to go on. So there may need to be small detours after that. The contractor has a little bit of flexibility with the detours that we had in the in the drawings. So those the signage for the bike path will be modified accordingly. And we will be sending something to the city. Hopefully, we can post it on the city website, talking about getting the word out, you know, when that bike path is open. Make sure everybody knows that, okay, you know, winter's over, construction in this part is over. We're going to be going on for another two years inside the fence, but outside in the public. And luckily, the vast majority of all this impact to the bike path, to the vehicular traffic happened over the winter when there wasn't as much traffic through there. Quarry was closed, all those things played in our favor.
I get asked at some regularity by some of the senior citizens that we've been meeting with about what is all this construction you're doing down there? Why are you having to do it? And I explain to people, and short history lesson here, when Batavia first got rolling back in the 1880s and 90s, the southwest side of town from about Wilson Street down to Walnut was where all the houses got built. And that's where the early water and sewer lines got installed. And it was all lead pipe and all the bad stuff now with lead pipe. So but basically what we are kind of doing is is that the volume of water that's now going into our water treatment plant and the sewer plant is phenomenally higher than what it ever was previously. And we've got to have the facilities to be able to do that. And thanks to this firm, they've kept us kind of our heads above water and we've been able to get all this put in place. And that this is going to be a much needed improvement when it gets done, given the fact that Batavia is not through growing, I guess, because last two years, we've issued permits for over 600 new houses. And right now, we've got about 400 things in park in play right now. So you do those numbers, that's like 1,000 new people that are turning on the water and flushing the water and everything else toward our water and sewer facilities. So we really do need these improvements. And then you factor into it, all this concern about lead pipe and what comes creeping off of that, there's a big push to get all this done. So I appreciate your good efforts. And these guys are right on top of it day by day and they're making sure that it's all being done right. So thank you for your good efforts.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Any nobody else? Any questions on that one? All right. The next one then is the Police Department Officer of the Year Award and the Frederick Bainer Award. Chief Maso?
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to come in front of you tonight and talk about some of the really great work that our officers have done in 2023. Just briefly explain to you, our supervisory staff, which is made up of 12 supervisors, we meet in January. We talk about all of our officers and all of the the great work that they've done in the previous year. We come up with a selection of nominees and then we actually have a voting process. So I'm very happy tonight to present the Officer of the Year Award to Brad Wicks, Officer Brad Wicks, if you want to. I'm just going to read a a letter here of commendation about Officer Wicks. With over 11 years of experience, Detective Brad Wicks was hired as a Batavia police officer in September of 2012. He completed his basic recruit training at the Police Training Institute at the University of Illinois in Urbana-Champaign in 2008. Detective Wicks has served in numerous roles with the Batavia Police Department, which include patrol officer, Kane County Accident Reconstruction Team Investigator, Traffic Enforcement Officer, General Case Detective, Range Officer, Use of Force Instructor, and most currently Drone Operator. He also recently completed a field training officer course and will surely be an active leader and mentor for our new recruits that we hire. Detective Wicks has served in the Batavia Police Department Investigations Division from January 21 until this past December 2023. His knowledge of firearms and use of force laws have made him an invaluable resource when incidents involving those topics come about. He does a lot of training as well for our department and our officers. Detective Wicks assumed the duties as the department's primary digital forensic investigator throughout his course of time as an investigator. He used his knowledge of digital evidence investigation to assist other investigators with their cases. In September of 2023, his extensive knowledge on firearms has earned him the opportunity to assume the responsibilities of the department's range master, which he's done a fantastic job with since taking that over last fall. Detective Wicks was a vital contributor to the investigation of a serious traffic crash that occurred in May of 2023 in which a 13 year old child on a bicycle was critically injured. He documented the scene and preserved evidence that indicated that the driver had been distracted on a cell phone at the time of the crash, in addition to being impaired by drugs and alcohol. Detective Wicks communicated with the young victim's family, keeping them apprised of the progress through the investigation and the judicial process. His effective communication with the Kane County State's Attorney's Office helped lead to criminal charges based on the evidence. In June of 2023, Detective Wicks played a vital role in an incident where a combat veteran had made suicidal statements to his family and armed himself with a pistol. Detective Wicks initially acted as a drone operator on the scene. Once the victim would had surrendered himself to authorities, Detective Wicks transitioned to the role of the primary investigator responsible for preparing a firearms restraining order and residential search warrant to locate and remove firearms from the residence. Detective Wicks relied on his training and experience to complete the documents quickly and accurately. Investigators executed the search warrant and lawfully removed the firearms from the home, protecting the well being of the victim and his family. The other thing I'll mention that's not written in this letter, recently, we had actually Brad secured some charges from some cases that dated back into the beginning part of 2023 involving some substantial damage to property around town in the amount of $75,000 plus dollars in damage. Outstanding job by Detective Wicks in his time. These cases take time and he very diligently put in the effort. And just recently, we have charged, I think it was four or five, five persons with damage that was occurring throughout the community. Detective Wicks is well respected by his peers and supervisors alike. His vast base of knowledge on law enforcement and his eagerness to serve the department in numerous roles and perseverance to seek the truth are highlighted in his work ethic and the results he strives for and achieves. In 2023, his body of work and approach to his job have distinguished him as a candidate worthy of recognition. And is with great pride that I present the Robert A. Popick Batavia Police Department Officer of the Year Award to Detective Brad Wicks. Our civilian employee of the Year Award this year went to Kristy Schuman. She was unable to attend tonight. I'll just say this about Kristy. She's been with our department for 33 years and has just a vast array of knowledge when it comes to anything and everything involving the records department. She is a go to person on just about every topic there could be records related. So although she couldn't make it, again, a testament to our employees, they stick around. People enjoy working for the city, enjoy serving the citizens and even after 33 years, you know, still still at it doing just outstanding work. The last the last award that I wanted to recognize is going to go to Officer Austin Robinson. real briefly, I just wanted to read what this award is about. This is the Frederick Bainer Award. The Frederick Bainer III Award is presented to an employee who has demonstrated loyalty, service, and commitment to the Batavia Police Department and the community. Sergeant Bainer, who the award is named after, had his pilot's license and utilized his skills and talents for the betterment of society. He had a passion for volunteering and would use his paid time off to fly recipients around the United States for Make-A-Wish Foundation events. He was also known to fly patients awaiting medical procedures and transplants to appointments around the country. Sergeant Bainer was an amazing human being with a heart full of compassion and love for people. It's a great privilege to honor his name and those like Austin Robinson, who strive to follow in his footsteps to make our world a better place. And I would like to just quickly read through this letter of commendation and you'll see why I'm so proud of Austin and all that he's done for not only the department, but the community and specifically Special Olympics Illinois. In his eighth year of service, Officer Austin Robinson began his law enforcement career with the Batavia Police Department in July of 2016. He completed his basic academy training at the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy in Glen Allen, Illinois. Officer Robinson has a passion for his job and extensive training also in traffic crash investigation and extensive experience with the K Cart Accident Reconstruction Team. Officer Robinson's passion for his calling extends well beyond his career and to a compassion for volunteering to serve others in the community. In 2023, Officer Robinson volunteered to take the reins as a department liaison for the Special Olympics Illinois Law Enforcement Torch Run. One of his goals was to get the Batavia Police Department name imprinted on the back of the official Torch Run T-shirt that is sold statewide. And this honor is bestowed only to agencies that are top fundraising fundraising agencies in the state of Illinois. Under his leadership, the Department Law Enforcement Torch Run Program set a record for fundraising last year, bringing in over $16,700 in donations. As a result of his time and effort, the department name is being emblazoned, actually, it has been emblazoned on the back of the 2024 Torch Run shirt. So that's the first time that's happened. So I'm super proud of that. In 2023, Officer Robinson spent countless hours of his time, not only fundraising for Special Olympics, but also raising awareness for the cause. He planned events, organized teams of officers, and participated in the Polar Plunge, COP on Top, the Law Enforcement Torch Run Summer Summer Games softball tournament, which we didn't do so well in, improve on that next year, and tip a cap. Officer Robinson rallied other officers to get involved and participate in the Spring Games at Marmee Academy, which are coming up at the end of this month. All are invited. And the Summer Games in Bloomington, Illinois. At the Summer Games, Austin took time to personally connect with athletes and to allow them and their families to check out his squad car. He also participated in assisting with the young athletes program and their sporting activities at Alice Gustafson Elementary School. The common denominator to all of these events mentioned above was that Officer Robinson and his love for for people. I personally had the opportunity to witness the great joy that the actions of Officer Robinson brought to the hearts of athletes at many of the events mentioned above. Whether he was presenting medals to hang around the necks of athletes, cheering on young competitors to try their best, or being doused over the head, which he was, while in uniform nonetheless with water, by screaming kids at the Summer Games, Austin always gives everything from his heart to the cause. Officer Officer Robinson freely gives of his time and goes above and beyond with his efforts for the Law Enforcement Torch Run. He demonstrates loyalty, service, and commitment to the department and to the community. It has been a real pleasure to witness the spirit of teamwork embodied by Officer Robinson and his ability to bring people from our department together. I am extremely grateful for his commitment to the Torch Run and for his friendship. And is with great pride that I present to Officer Austin Robinson the Frederick G. Bainer III Award for 2023. Again, thank you so much for your time and look forward to continuing to talk about all the great work that is happening at the department.
Well, thank you, Chief. I just like to take a minute as the mayor and speak about these two gentlemen that have just been honored by this police department, Officer Wicks and Officer Robinson. And both of them have some unique traits about themselves that have been picked up by Batavia community. And Officer Wicks, I've had several people in some of our senior living communities ask me if they have a police problem, can they call 911 and ask for him to come personally? So he's I don't know what he's done to win the hearts of the senior living, but there's a bunch of them that really think he's the great guy to go to and really appreciate what it is. And I that type of thing that really makes me very, very proud that we have police officers who the seniors who many of us, me being one of them have, you know, sometimes your memory kind of fades on you. But Officer Wicks, I think, has done some stuff with those folks that really ingrained him there as somebody that they know they can call on if that need be. In the case of Officer Robinson, one of the things when you're the mayor, you get the opportunity to literally literally go into the six public school, elementary schools that we have in Batavia. And Officer Robinson's name comes up quite frequently because they all know him. He's the good guy that helps with the athletic programs and gets the games going and all this other good stuff. So he's the one that I've had several tell me, well, I think I want to be like Officer Robinson and become a member of the Batavia Police Department because he gets to go to all those games and help all those kids. And I think I'd like to do that. So I think what we got here is two guys who really are passionate examples of what it is to be a policeman beyond just wearing the badge and patrolling the street. These guys get into the neighborhoods and the hearts and the minds of both the young and the old and really make the Batavia Police Department and its mission stand out. So Chief, I got to commend you for selecting these two folks because they really have been ideal people that Batavia should truly be very proud of. And so I wanted to make that statement tonight to City Council. And thank you two gentlemen for all you've done in your careers here to really make become standout police officers with the Batavia Police Department. So thank you. All right. And item number 10 is an appointment of Barb McKittrick to the Batavia Environmental Commission for a three year term. We just I just recently was given a resignation by a member of the commission. So at this time, I would like to officially ask for the council's confirmation of Barb McKittrick to be the new commissioner on the Batavia Environmental Commission for a three year term. Would somebody make that motion?
Moved.
Move Alderman Beck, second, Baldman Solfi. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Beck. Eber.
Aye.
Chancet.
Wolf.
Aye.
Solfa.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uwer.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
12 yes, no, no, two absent.
Motion's approved. Thank you very much. She's going to be a worthy addition to the commission. Okay, moving to 11, which is a proclamation for National Bike Month for May of 2024. And Alderman, Chancet, do you have that?
Your Honor, proclamation, whereas the city of Batavia, Illinois acknowledges May as National Bike Month, recognizing the importance of promoting healthy and sustainable modes of transportation. And whereas the city of Batavia has made significant strides in enhancing the safety and accessibility of bicycling and pedestrian infrastructure through the implementation of the Batavia Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan. Whereas the city of Batavia is committed to fostering a culture of active transportation, which includes promoting the use of bicycles as a means of commuting, recreation, and exercise. And whereas the city of Batavia has over 17 miles of local and regional trails or paths and 1.6 miles of bike lanes, as well as shared marked lanes and designed bike routes. And whereas the city of Batavia is proud to support initiatives such as Bike Month, a nationwide celebration that encourages residents to embrace cycling as a viable and enjoyable mode of transportation. And whereas the city of Batavia recognizes the importance of ensuring the safety of cyclists and pedestrians and is dedicated to providing resources and infrastructure to support safe biking and walking within our community. And whereas the city of Batavia is committed to educating our youth about bike safety through programs such as bike education taught at elementary schools and school supported bike safety exams. And whereas the city of Batavia has a dedicated bicycle police patrol And whereas the city of Batavia has a dedicated bicycle police patrol tasked with promoting bike safety and enhancing traffic laws to ensure the well-being of cyclists and pedestrians. And whereas the city of Batavia proudly supports Walk and Roll School Day, an initiative that encourages students to embrace active modes of transportation while promoting health, safety, and environmental awareness. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, do hereby proclaim the month of May as National Bike Month in the city of Batavia, and urge all residents to join in celebrating and promoting bicycling as a safe, healthy, and sustainable mode of transportation. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the proclamation as read.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Solfa.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
Motion's approved. All right, let us move then to proclamation for Arbor Day.
Do you have somebody in the room to accept a proclamation for?
Oh, I didn't see you back there, I'm sorry. Come on up. On behalf of the City Council, it's my honor to present to you this proclamation for National Bike Month. And I want to thank you for all that the commission is doing to kind of educate this community on the safe and the values of riding a good bicycle. And I think we've come a long way from some of the days before. We got a ways to go. I think sometimes I worry the bicycles are getting a little bit fast.
They are.
And motorizing them, I don't know if it's all been in a positive motion, but anyway, I think it's good that we have continued public awareness and knowledge of it, and I think this proclamation well explains it. So I'll turn it over to you if you want to make some comments.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Joanne Spitz. This is my 14th year on the Bicycle Commission. I think you covered it all. We're very, very grateful for the support of the city and the Park District, the Forest Preserve, and the Fire and the Police Department for all you do to help us and support us at the bike programs and on the trail. And we're underway for the May 8 Bike and Roll, Walk and Roll the School Day with signs and stickers and the police and the Fire Department. We got Northwestern to donate helmets, Hooverwood has two bikes to raffle. We have a bike education program that we developed many years ago with the help of Abby that is still going on by grade level at each elementary school. They do a bike quiz each, for every student that does a quiz, the school gets $2. We'll be doing safety posts on Facebook, and we're working with Lori to help promote Bike Month. So thank you all for all your support and help. Very grateful.
Thank you.
One quick question. Did you say May 8 for the bike to school?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, moving then to item 12, which is proclamation for Arbor Day.
Your Honor, our proclamation, whereas in 1872, Jace Sterling Morton proposed to Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify the community. And whereas trees, wherever they're planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Batavia has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue in its tree-planting ways. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, Illinois, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 6, 26, 2024 as Arbor Day in the city of Batavia, and urge all residents to celebrate Arbor Day in the support of the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the hearts, and promote the well-being of this and future generations on this 15th day of April 2024. Signed, Jeffrey D. Shelkey. Your Honor, I move that we approve the proclamation as read.
Motion by Chantet, second by Beck for the approval of the proclamation for Arbor Day. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Solfa.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
Motion's approved. Gary, are you here to accept the proclamation?
I am. Just a couple of items I would like to highlight this year. Thank you, Alderman. The city did pass a tree preservation ordinance earlier this year, well, actually, it was last year, I think at the end of last year. And so that ordinance will guide new developments as well as the city's own construction projects. And City Council passed a strategic, strategic plan that prioritized enhancing the city's urban forest and planting even more trees. So I just wanted to highlight those two items as we celebrate Arbor Day.
And I just would like to mention that this past year, or last year, we lost Frank Sopp, who had been the city arborist for a number of years and had really done some nice things. I was party to a conversation in the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Plantings Group, who does a lot of regional studies on stuff that goes on. And they shared with me that they were of the opinion, by coming out and looking around and counting stuff, that Batavia is one of the most intensified tree-planting cities in the region. That we've got a lot of growing 100-year-old trees, and we have more being planted, and that there's a lot of cities that haven't planted much, and they're kind of as barren. But Batavia kind of stands out as one of the top cities in the Chicagoland region for having as many trees as we have. And some of that goes way back to the 1850s. You know, we get some of these trees come down and the arborists come in and look at this tree and its trunk and say, my goodness gracious, this tree was planted in the Civil War. And we do have a lot of trees, so this is something that's very important to Batavia, and it's a trademark of our town that we have them. And I want to personally thank Gary and his crew for doing all that they do to kind of deal with this, because these trees, all, some of them have very complex issues and problems that get in our face, and sometimes we have to cut things down or move them or reduce them or whatever. And generally, Gary and his group do a very nice job of maintaining the quality of the tree appearance in Batavia, which is, as I say, one of the great assets of our town.
You mentioned Mr. Sopp. He needs to get credit for all the trees he planted in this town, or, you know, was responsible for. So nicest gentleman, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, item 13 is Main Street. And we have its executive director here.
Hi, thanks so much for having me. At Main Street, we've been busy getting ready for the outdoor season. We're really excited to announce that we're adding a Wednesday night farmer's market that will be June through August. It'll be a smaller-scale market than the Saturday market. We're aiming for about 20 vendors a week. It will just be on the section of River Street between Wilson and State. We're really excited about it. We had, we've accepted 20 vendors so far, and six of those are new to the Batavia market. And then, you know, things are going great with the outdoors, the Saturday market as well. So far, we've accepted 62 vendors, and of those, 10 are new. So we're really excited about this upcoming season. We are continuing to share stories of the merchants. So one of the features that we've been doing is called Then and Now, and it's where we get help from the Depot Museum. They give us some history of the space that a business is in, and then we basically highlight what that business was and what's there now. So it's been a really well-received feature, and we're really grateful to all the information that the Depot Museum has provided. And another ongoing promotion that we've been doing is a monthly Meet the Merchant. And so basically, we get, we feature a different merchant each week, each month. We share that on our social media, on our, in our newsletter, and this is also housed on our website. And again, it's just a way to get to know the downtown businesses a little bit better. And then finally, event season is coming. Here's all the things that we have coming up. And volunteering, we like to say it's as easy as one, two, three. We ask people to start volunteering with day of events. So, you know, we're always looking for people to set up, clean up, greet people. And then if you enjoy that, join a committee, and from there, if you like that, join our Board of Directors. And then finally, there's some ribbon cuttings coming up. The Geneva Winery is having their ribbon cutting on Thursday at 4:00 PM, and that's at 5 North River Street. And then Hollow Traveler Fancy Nancy Boards is having a ribbon cutting on April 26 at 4:30, and they're located at 106 East Wilson Street. And then the Boardwalk Shops will have a ribbon cutting on their opening day, which is May 10 at 9:30, and that's 114 East Wilson Street. Does anybody have any questions for me?
With the advent of the outdoor market and Wednesdays, I'd like to have somebody else or several on the council join me to bring a door discussion back to the cow so we can talk about that for that area or the whole downtown, maybe, you know, have that discussion.
I'll join you.
I'll join you.
Me too.
So I think I'd like to get that on the cow as soon as we can so we can discuss that and maybe have that be part of, you know, a trial for the summer to see if we can work that downtown, to allow that, and maybe help some of these businesses, you know, have another way to connect to these things that we have downtown. We've got the great space to program down there, and I think this might help us, one, control it, and two, be able to, you know, help support those businesses down there. Okay, great.
Great.
I think you got what you wanted.
Wow.
And Main Street will, will help us with, you know, trying to institute that if we decide to do that, you know, in the downtown area and, you know, also help us to get the businesses in here to discuss that with us when we get to that point, so.
Yeah, that's great.
I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving then to item 14, which is Resolution 2024-063-R, calling for a permanent and immediate ceasefire and hostage release in Gaza. Now, let me begin this conversation by sharing some comments and communications that I've had as the mayor. As you may remember, at your last committee meeting, we had quite a conversation here about stuff, and there was a number of people who in town picked up that somehow or another the Batavia City Council was going to take a side in this war. And I said, I did not believe that was the intention of the proclamation. And so I've had several people suggest to me, well, I think I'm going to get worried, and I don't know if there's some of you out in the audience, I think there probably are. This thing has gotten a kind of more intensified as, as time has gone on this week. And as most of you know, I generally try to stop over at McDonald's in the morning for a cup of coffee when I first get down here. And the word got out that I came in there and last, I guess it was last Thursday, I had a lady come up out, from outside, come in and ask me if I'd step outside for a minute. And so I goes outside, and she proceeds to start to cry to me that she's the aunt of a girl who was part of the hostages that were taken in this first raid by Palestine on Israel at the concert or whatever it was. And the niece has been released, she's back in normal life, but this woman had some terrible things to say about what happened to her while she was being held captive. And, you know, and on the other side, I've had people tell me that their family has now been the subject of a bombing over there and has lost their house, and it, I mean, it's, it's just, it's on both sides of the coin here. So I, I think the audience we see here today, and I'm going to make the comment that I think we've got one side that's pretty well represented, and we got the other side that's kind of the two sides in this thing. They're not here tonight, but I can assure you, they're probably all watching on TV, wanting to, they say that, most of them say they don't want to come down here, but if they have to, they'll come down and join in on this situation. So this afternoon, I got called by some of the folks from, I call it the, well, what's the word I want to use here? The folks that are dealing with the Palestinian groups. And we had, I don't know, four or five of them came down, and Chief Mas and myself met with them for about an hour. We had a very nice conversation, and I explained to them how I thought that the city was kind, the city council was kind of on bumpy ground here as far as what they wanted to say in some kind of a proclamation, because I, maybe I'm wrong, and well, I guess we'll find out when we vote, but many of you indicated you really don't want to be having the city take a side here, because at the end of the day, it really doesn't mean much. I mean, you know, and there's a number of other, I've talked to several other mayors in the region that are having this conversation or had it, and some of them have said they've just wanted to walk away from it. They didn't want to get involved in it and get everything going. So, you know, I think it's a very pressing issue, and I guess I would feel good if, I don't know, we're going to talk about these two resolutions, but I just want to shoot my mouth off here at the very beginning and say, I think there may be a better way to write a proclamation than use some other town's word and put Batavia in place of whatever town we're talking, whoever we borrowed. And I guess I would like to have it specifically talk about how we are supportive of an immediate and total ceasefire, whichever side you're on, returning all the hostages, ending the war once and for all, and that we all try to sit down and try to rework ourselves, repair, help each other, and get back into this thing, because this doesn't seem to be, you know, the other night with the entry of Iran into this thing, that just took it up another step. And it gets to be, I think, a lot of people get worried about, you know, where that's all going. I guess if nothing else, that situation helped the United States of America show that their understanding of technology, when they can shoot down almost every one of those drones that was fired at the other guy. So we'll, we'll see how that all comes together. But I, I really am not sure that I think that either one of these proclamations are really what we want. And maybe we should, I don't know, if we want to invite the folks down from both sides and just have a meeting in Batavia of ourselves to kind of get everybody to know who everybody is and what their strong feelings many people have, because this really is something that, you know, passing these proclamations as near as I can tell really doesn't do nothing. Yeah, I mean, it just agitates the situation a little bit, and I think there's a better way to write something like this. And, you know, we got a peace bridge with a big name on it. We're trying to be a town that promotes peace and with great viability. And so I just talk about it, but that's my two cents is I'm not sure we're ready yet to do this, and I think there's a better way to do it. And the better way to do it is bring all those who within our own town are not agreeable on this, and that they get an understanding that we are going to do stuff that will kind of try to encourage everybody to talk to one another and come together and put something together. As we talked this afternoon with the group I had, you know, Batavia's got a long history going back into the 1850s. We were the first town in the area to welcome the blacks in. And that, you know, that led to further integration and understanding, and today, we probably, again, the folks in Chicago tell me, Batavia is probably one of the better integrated cities in the Chicagoland region as far as the diversity of all the various nationalities who seemingly are living here very peaceful and aren't causing each other a bunch of problems. And I'm very proud of that fact that we have this in Batavia, and it was something that was built 150 years ago. And to start passing resolutions that, one way or another, somebody thinks they're taking sides on this thing, I don't know if I think that's good. So who wants to start on this one?
I'll say that I would agree with you that what we tried to do at the last, I don't know, two meetings was first to listen, and then also do our own research, do, you know, our own due diligence, what we thought was right for Batavia. our own due diligence, what we thought was right for Batavia if we were going to go forward with this. And I think, in my mind, what we talked about was to try to come up with a simple, you know, resolution that we could send off to Washington to tell them, hey, this is just from a little city in the, you know, outskirts of Chicago, that we do think about this, our residents do think about this, and we wanted to, you know, put our little voice out there and ask people to stop. And, and the hardest part about that is, is immediately we start hearing from one side or another side that, you know, wants their point to be louder or better heard than somebody else's, and then that becomes the real issue that I think we almost want to get away from. You know, and that's, I think, a lot of the, the, I'll say negativity, but the, the opposition to even having the resolutions that was brought forward at our last meeting was, I think, a lot relegated to those issues, that we didn't want to get down into saying, well, this happened on this day, and then that happened on another day. And, you know, we don't know exactly what's going on. We only see what we see where we look at whatever news agency or whatever we want to believe. And that becomes something that then is so subjective, again, you're right, it really probably doesn't mean a whole lot. But I do think that we have to realize we have a voice, and, you know, if one city council sends something, might not mean a whole lot. If 100 city councils send something to the representatives that are in their area that they know might cost them votes, might get them votes, the next time they come up for election, they might start listening to us. So, you know, I don't have a problem with us sending a resolution to Washington to try to get them to use their influence to change something that I think is wrong in this world. And the amount of death and destruction that I've seen on both sides needs to stop. And I don't know that the city council is going to change that, but I'm willing to say, stop.
All the chances?
So I definitely want to recognize a turning point in the conversation. Alderman Beck had mentioned that we did have people here that were our neighbors and they were hurting. And that really set the tone for the week for me. We do need to listen to our neighbors, even when it's unpopular, and even when it's uncomfortable. And I think what we did was a great exercise for this body, because it certainly encouraged me to do additional research, pay more attention to global politics, and really truly understand the issues. But I also take both of your wisdom and recognize that while we are not going to be the ones that are going to cause this to end, the people above us who do have the power in a representative democracy absolutely do. So I would definitely support, as we've done in the past, sending resolutions that will ask the people above us to do their jobs, because we have people in our community who are hurting. In, in a couple of days, Alderman, Jolosinger and I are going to be borrowing the van and driving down to Springfield. And whatever resolution that's passed by this body, I would be certainly happy to shop that resolution to our representatives down there and let them know that the people in Batavia are hurting as well, and that people in Springfield need to know about that.
Well, we've got these two resolutions, you know, I've introduced the first one.
This is Mark Uer.
Mark Uer, go ahead.
Yeah, Dan, I agree with what you're saying, where you say we have residents that are reaching out to us and they're hurting. And I am absolutely not trying to trivialize this right now. But first, let me back up just a second. You know, situation has changed over there in a very bad way, and I'm not willing to take sides, because frankly, and I said this before, I don't know enough. And yes, I said before, I want peace on earth, but there are humanitarian conflicts all over this world that we're not making any comment on. So that's one thing. Number two, we did just have two residents come up and speak to us tonight on a situation that's going to personally affect them in their neighborhood. And we're going to vote on that in a few weeks about whether or not we're going to put a road through their neighborhood. And that's the stuff that our residents elected us to talk about. And those are the residents, I'm not dismissing any resident, everybody is allowed to come up and talk about anything at any time, and, and I hear them. And I responded to one of the residents today saying, there's stuff in here that, that is, affects me probably a little bit more personally, and I'm not going to talk about that at all, that's nobody's business, and I'm going to leave that out of the conversation. So that's why I don't want to have to vote on this, because I have other reasons that are nobody's business. But the things are, should be really important to us that we vote on are the things that, like, impact our residents in their daily lives. And I think that this is something that is way outside of our control, and the situation over there has gotten well beyond what the original intention of this ceasefire was. So I'm a no, or an abstain, or whatever it happens to be on this, I just don't think that this is something we should be talking about.
Alderman Baron?
Thanks, Your Honor. So what I'd like to start off with is I do have something that I want to read from Alderman Lehman, who's not able to be here tonight. My apologies for not being there tonight due to travel. If I were present tonight, I would embrace listening to our Batavia residents and friends who have been impacted by the conflict overseas. While this resolution does not have direct impact on the situation in the Middle East, it does have direct reflection of what city council values. From the leaf pickup process to the paving of the roads and the quality of life we all share, a great community is made of great people and great work. Supporting a ceasefire is a gesture towards the value of people. This shows that Batavia is a community that cares for those here, for hostages and victims there, that we recognize our impacts and desires to share our concerns with our broader representatives, that a vote for aid represents our values. Batavia is a place that does the best work we can while we listen to the concerns of our residents. And again, that's on behalf of Alderman Lehman. I want to kind of echo really what Dan said, where people may not think that we have direct, where we can make a direct impact, we can make a direct impact. I view this sending resolution to our national representatives no different than sending resolutions that we work on multiple times during the year to our state representatives. This is something that we're saying to our representatives, and as speakers came to the meeting and said to us, they want to hear from us. And so now is the time for us to go to them and let them know what we're looking for. And where we can't take sides by us saying, we want a ceasefire and the hostages released and aid to get into innocent people, there are innocent people on both sides. And I think that if we do draft a resolution to support both of that, that is something that we can send to our representatives. Thank you.
Anybody else on the council? Alderman Lea?
I mean, I do, I do hear what everyone's saying. I absolutely have, I've heard the voices on both sides, gotten plenty of emails over the, over the last couple of weeks, week and a half or so. You know, took, took a lot of, lot of hard thinking at this and what the right approach is. And I have come to the conclusion, for the simple reason that I can't point to two clear parties that we're talking about the ceasefire with. I know one of them. I don't know the other, right? So if we don't have two party, two clear parties that are willing to abide by a ceasefire, what we're doing in our small little town talking about this, I'm not sure. I understand the humanitarian crisis, absolutely. And if we ever wanted to draft something and bring it up, it's, yeah, we don't stand for war, peace on earth, absolutely, but for us to be giving, you know, any type of opinion on, on where this needs to go, especially in light of recent events, I just feel is not our place, so I'll be a no.
I'm also going to be a no. I don't like the way either one of these are worded. I think they have inflammatory statements in them. I don't think there's any need to say that somebody's committing genocide when the other side can say the same thing. I mean, I just don't like the way these are worded at all. I think they're clearly more one-sided, and I think that they're inflammatory, so I am voting no.
Alderman Lea?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I don't see either of these resolutions taking one side over the other. I see them as calling out some terrible things that are happening and asking that they be stopped. This idea of one side or the other, the only side, the only two sides I'm seeing is, do you support a resolution or you don't support sending a resolution? Because the resolutions themselves are not taking sides. They're pointing out the atrocities that have happened and condemning them, and asking our elected leaders who serve us to do something about it. I believe Representative Foster even made a comment that he wants to see that, that will empower him, when more towns, more citizens step up and say what they want. So I support both of these resolutions. I do prefer the 64 as it's a little more comprehensive than the other, but I'm fully in support of it. I think it's wrong. I think it's this situation is escalating, and yes, it will affect Batavia. And, and so I will be voting in favor of sending the message that we don't find this acceptable. Thank you.
Somebody else? Alderman Beck?
I would reiterate what Tony said, that I like the language in 64. It does not mention genocide. I believe it is very neutral on, of a stance, that it is simply for those three things that we want ceasefire, we want the aid through, and we want all hostages to be released. And so I will be supporting that one.
What would come in?
We're still discussing amongst the council here, so let us finish. Nobody else in the council?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would say, you know, if, if there are things that we didn't like about these, if we're going to try and draft our own specific resolution to go through, I think maybe this is the time to state some of those if we're going to do that. I mean, that was the one reason why we put these two on the agenda, so that we would make a decision on this, because I also feel like I don't want this to engulf us every meeting that we have to, you know, go through this. And it's not to minimize what we think are, you know, the problems with the situation that's there, but it's also, we do have to spend time on other things. We do keep adding extra meetings after our council meetings, so we can get through everything that's on there. As Laura reminded us the other night, we're looking at over 200 resolutions this year where we're at right now. So it has been insanely busy, and we need to devote times, you know, our time that we have, you know, to the things that we really have to concentrate on. And, you know, this is something that I think warrant some time, and I think we've given it that, so I'd kind of like to try to, if there's anything somebody doesn't like about one or the other, let's get it out there tonight, and then let's vote on them. Whether they pass or not, I like us to do that, so that way we kind of get through this.
Nancy?
I'd be interested to know what the historical precedence for these are as well, these ceasefires between these two parties.
I mean, right, look, look at the history. I mean, and, and that's one of the things where I think.
Do they work?
If it saves lives, is it wrong to do it? So that's, that would be my, that would be my statement to that.
Someone keeps breaking.
Right, and, and that is a problem, and I will agree to that. And that's one of the things that I, I think, you know, I looked at this, at the beginning when this started, you know, what was in their mind to think that some kind of attack that they did like that was not going to draw an insane response? And that's exactly what happened. And again, I hate to see this repeat itself, but at some point, the rest of the world's got to stand up and say no to some of this. And if that doesn't happen, not going to change, just like all the environmental stuff we do here, and nobody wants to do anything to China. And China's going to be the worst polluter ever, real soon. But we won't talk about it. We won't talk about it in a city council meeting. We won't talk about it at the state level, and we won't talk about it at the federal level. So again, little things have to start somewhere. I don't have a problem with it starting here, following somebody else's role.
Alderman Jolosinger?
I will echo a lot of things that have been said. We can't control what happens after this is out of our hands. I am for taking a stance that we would like to see peace in the world. I share Alderman Lea's interpretation of these, that neither really take one side or the other over there, just the side of preventing growing humanitarian crisis. I am also more in favor of 64, because that has, yeah, a more comprehensive, as Alderman Buck stated, approach, and doesn't include genocide. So that is where I stand on this.
Who else?
Well, I guess I would add that I like the very beginning of both of these, which it says, Resolution calling for a permanent and immediate ceasefire and hostage release in Gaza. I mean, I think that says something, but that's, I don't know if we should go on and list all this other who did what to who and whatever have you, because that's got a whole bunch of people in town that aren't sitting in this audience tonight, but I've certainly heard from them to think that, why are we saying that? You know, it's not, you know, it just doesn't go very far with a lot of people. So, did you want, somebody want to make a motion for the approval? The first one will have a vote? Is that what you'd like to do?
Guess if I was going to make a motion on 2024-63R, I'd take the first three wheresses, and then I'd get rid of everything in the middle till we get down to the now there for it be resolved by the city, remove the proposed US Congress HR Resolution 786, because I don't know what that's going to be if it ever passes. I don't think the city should sign on to something that we don't know from the House of Representatives that really have a problem with that. Leave the rest of that phrase in the urging and immediate ceasefire to end violence, release of all the hostages and prisoners promptly sent, facilitate the entry of humanitarian assistance into Gaza and other affected areas of the armed conflict, and then the rest of it the way it is.
What's everybody's reaction to that?
Make that in form of a motion?
I can, I can make that in, in form of a motion to remove the fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth wheresses.
Your Honor, this is Mark Uer again.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess, I know where you're going, Alan, and I understand what you're trying to do, but this doesn't account, again, for the change in what happened over the weekend, where multiple other actors got involved in this, and it's, it's much bigger than this. And I understand. And I understand, I understand what the mayor is trying to say, and just a simple ceasefire, but it's not a ceasefire between two parties anymore. This has gotten much bigger. This is well beyond the scope of the 14 of us.
Now, with Iran, you've got a new party involved in the whole thing, so-
Oh, they were involved to begin with, anyway, the way they funneled them.
They bombed their own city. They asked for retaliation.
I, I don't think we're going to get into a back and forth argument about this. I understand your comments. I know that they bombed that. They'll say on that side that-
This is exactly why the resolution is not, not appropriate, because it's very politicized.
Are you making that in the form of a motion?
I'll go back and look and see how many of these I want to remove out here before we, before I make that motion. So the first three stay-
This is 64?
And 63.
63.
Because that's the first one on the agenda. That's the first one I'd address. So the first three stay, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine removed, and then everything from the "now, therefore," with the, with the removal of the proposed U.S. Congressional House Resolution 786. That doesn't have to be in there. And then urging the immediate ceasefire, from there on out, it stays, and the rest of it. And I'd make that amendment to the motion on Resolution 24-63R.
On an amendment? Is there a second?
A second to Alderman Wolf's motion?
Actually, there wasn't actually a motion to actually put the resolution-
That would be on the amendment that I made to it.
Motion to amend, is what you-
Yeah.
Second to the motion to amend.
Hey, well, if there's no-
Yes, there's no second.
No second on the motion to amend, then I'll just read it as it is, leave the, or leave the resolution as it is, 2024-63R, "Calling for Permanent Immediate Ceasefire and Hostage Release in Gaza." That's my motion.
Okay. We have a motion, have a second to that one? Okay.
That would die then because of no second. Then I'll move on to item 15, which is Resolution 2024-64R, "Calling for Permanent Immediate Ceasefire and Hostage Release in Gaza." Anybody else want to have a shot at changing anything in it?
I move we adopt as-is.
You making that in a motion?
Yes. I'd move that we adopt Resolution 2024-064R, as-is.
Second by Piper? Any further discussion on that?
I guess the only thing that I have a problem with in this one is item five on the second page of it. Just because I don't know what in international law they're talking about, or if that is real, and I don't think that that's in the best interest of the United States to do that.
Thank you for your point.
Anybody else?
Alderman Chantet?
I do want to point out, this, this is the one that was written by a resident, correct?
No, this is the one from St. Paul.
That was St. Paul?
Okay.
I, I do, I do at least want to mention that as well, that the reason we are this far in the weeds right, right now, is there was an opportunity for us to, to cover the Peace Do we, do we have a way to incorporate that, to show that it's coming from us?
I would see that as a friendly amendment, if you would amend it.
It's refreshing to have young people come forward. It's refreshing to have, when I thought I was going to be the youngest person, I legit thought that this, no one was interested in politics anymore, to, to see people under age 20 participating in the political process and bringing out this many people and getting their point across, it would be-
Want to put that in the form of a motion then?
I want to incorporate language acknowledging that Batavia is the proud hometown of the Peace Bridge, and that we incorporate language.
Could, could I make a recommendation on that?
Sure.
On how to incorporate that? Down of "be it further resolved," we, the Batavia City Council, sorry, is committed, is committed to peace on earth. As local leaders are using our voices in peace. So after the Batavia City Council insert the part about where we're committed to peace on earth, and then continue on from there.
I will second your amendment, then.
Motion and second to amend the ordinance to put the peace on earth clause in there, is that what you're saying?
Exactly where does that go?
Um, so, on the second page down at the bottom, "Be it further resolved," we come, the Batavia City Council is committed to peace on earth.
As local leaders committed to the cause of peace on earth are using our voices in the cause for peace?
Yes. Unless somebody wants to amend it as, as read.
We got to amend it then. Somebody's making, we're making a motion and adding that as an amendment?
I made the original motion. If there's an amendment that's presented, I can accept as a friendly amendment to modify the-
You want to vote on your motion first and then amend?
No, I, I accept it, so it incorporates exactly what we talked about.
But I mean, we need to do it right here, as far as amendments. So we got to vote on the amendment, I guess is what I'm suggesting.
Following Robert's rules, if he accepts the amendment, then we just incorporate it and vote once?
I think so.
I don't want to start a war or anything.
Legal, legal suggests.
You're making an amendment to, the, the proposed amendment. As the maker of the original motion, I accept that as a friendly amendment, therefore it's part of my, the standing motion to adopt Resolution 65-2024-064R, as amended.
You're accepting it as a friendly amendment to your motion?
Correct.
Okay. The attorney advises me you can do that, so-
Correct.
So I guess we would then, we have a motion and second then to adopt this with the amendment, the friendly amendment as agreed to by Alderman Malay. Any other discussion? Everybody understand what we're voting on here? Kirk, call the roll.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
No.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Nancy?
No.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
No.
Baron?
Aye.
Ayazi?
No.
Eight yes, four no, two absent.
So I guess that ends that discussion then, and we've got that approved. Go to the administrator's report.
I wanted to start out today just with some community and economic development news. The Winding Creek development that's going on off of McKee Street has now submitted for 80 of the 163 lots that are available there. And then also, the, the bridge construction is expected to begin in late May that connects Branford Drive. The Plan Commission recommended approval of the Ashton Ridge Development Proposal on the former Siemens property on April 10th, and that was the third meeting on that project. And this will be heard by the committee as a whole on April 23rd. This Wednesday, the Plan Commission, I'm sorry, this, yeah, this Wednesday, the Plan Commission will conduct a public hearing on the draft downtown plan, and also the request for proposal for architect for the Tin Shop renovation on North River Street are due Friday, April 12th, and I know that we have had several come through. In public works, the city was informed by the American Public Power Association that our electric utility ranked in the top quartile for reliability for the year 2023. This is an incredible success considering that the city experienced a tornadic event on March 30th of that year, of that same year. However, 25th percentile is not good enough for us. Our goal is to achieve the top 10% of reliability amongst municipal utilities in future years. PPS has begun the process of installing some new native landscaping along the frontage of the government center here. If you recall, the landscaping was added to partially compensate for the loss of landscaping associated with the expansion of the parking in front of our building. We've also placed some aesthetic limestone in the planting beds, and those limestones were recycled from demolition of the old Donovan Bridge, which is the Wilson Street Bridge. And then also, the week, this week is National Telecommunicators Week. So far too often, the unsung heroes who answer the 911 calls for service go unrecognized. And we are extremely fortunate to have the men and women of the Tricom Central Dispatch Center working day and night to ensure that emergency calls for service are answered and then accurately dispatched to frontline responders in an expeditious fashion. Every year, these individuals help save countless lives in our community, and we thank our 911 dispatchers. Thank you. And that's all that I have, unless anybody has any questions for me. Yes, Alderman Chantet?
I'll make sure that when, when you guys gas up the van, if you'd put a folder inside so we can pass out some resolutions while we're-
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have other business from the city council. Okay, moving to the mayor's report, which is the final thing. I just want tonight to offer some insights as to some of the things that are happening that will be impacting our community. And one of them, I think most of you are aware of this, the Kane County Forest Preserve Commission has been buying for several years now farms west of Batavia, and they have assembled enough land out there, it's over 1,600 acres, that they are, it's being suggested to me that what they're building is the biggest forest, or assembling is the biggest forest preserve in Kane County, which at the time, where it's located, will be kind of somewhat central, a little bit south, but central to all of Kane County. And it's going to be a big enough land area that, over the next 20, 30 years, all kinds of stuff could potentially be done there. And they're maybe not through buying yet, but they just bought north of Main Street at Nelson's Lake, they bought the Jungles Farm, which I believe is 331 acres. So their assembling, we're going to have, on the east side of Batavia, we got Fermilab, which is 6,800 acres, and on the west side, we're going to have the largest, potentially the largest forest preserve in Kane County, which I don't know what the final number's going to be, but it's already six, over 1,600. So if you do those numbers, you've got 8,400 acres of land that's immediately adjacent to Batavia, much of which is in our school district, but there won't be any houses built, there won't be any taxes claimed, and that's not all bad in some respects, but we're going to be, we're kind of unique as far as the rest of the cities around us, because suddenly we got this big area here, which, under the previous agreements, Batavia had control over most of that land for annexation to it. And so we've got, we've got some interesting things to consider as we go forward. The other thing is, is that we've, we have out on the east, southeast side at Wind Energy, we've got this area that's immediately to the west of Fermilab, down by Wind Energy and Kirk Road, and they've just got through building 242 attached townhouses. And so I am told they've almost all been sold, and so those will be occupied here very soon. And then with what Laura just shared about Polte Homes, they, they've built the first unit out there on McKee Street, just to the west of Randall Road, and that's 163 lots, all single family. And now the one that was approved the other night by the Plan Commission at the Siemens/Furnace Electric property at Van Nordrick and McKee, that's potentially proposed to be 100 and maybe 179, but that has with it a big attached townhome proposal. And I will tell you that in talking to the real estate world, there is a really pent-up demand for people wanting to buy attached, attached townhomes in Batavia. And case in point, Georgetown out there, if one just on the market gets listed by MLS, it gets four or five showing requests almost immediately, that's, realtors are sitting there waiting to buy it. So there is a real pent-up demand for that type of housing in Batavia, and I certainly support it and understand it. We had some interesting discussion the other night at the Plan Commission, and I've been coming to the meetings on the Polte Home thing, and it was approved by a vote of four to three, and I was certainly not on the side of those who voted against it, because given the fact that we're, we're probably going to lose at least 1,600 acres on the far west side, that nothing will ever be built on, that Batavia right now's got enough people wanting to get in here and want to live here, that we got to offer things like are being proposed at the Polte and on the old Furnace Electric property. If you lived here long enough, you know what I'm talking about, and part of it's the Wyerig Farm, too. So we've got some interesting things happening, and of course, then we have this annexation that we did a number of years ago on the Mooseheart property, in which they want to build, and they haven't told me they don't want to do it now, still want to build a senior living community down there, and they have permission to build 830 age-restricted living units there, right to the west of the east side, or west side fire station, going all the way down to Mooseheart Road, and then there's 100 acres of Randall Road frontage that's been zoned by us as business. So I mean, that could be another, but again, the, the situation that exists there is, you've got 830 units, and part of the annexation agreement says to buy one of these and move into it, you got to be over 55 years old and have no children in elementary or secondary school. So there's another one at the Batavia School District. Number one, doesn't get any kids, but they may get some taxes off of that one, but there won't be any kids coming, I guess, is what I'm saying. So the west side may be a little bit stretched for kids moving forward here, given the, the development that's kind of unfolding. And, you know, I would just offer that when I go into the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for planning at the old post office there in downtown, Batavia is highly, you know, is a great part of the conversation, and they're very complimentary toward what we've done as a community, the diversity of the housing styles, the restoration of the old stuff in the downtown, the restoring of the riverbanks. We've done a lot of popular things that they're saying, you know, a lot of other, they're telling other towns, you want to see how to do it right, go out to Batavia. So I feel good about that. So we sit here and have all of our disagreements and our arguments, but at the end of the day, we're being cited as being one that has things going for it that are very popular in the rest, to the rest of the world. So that's not bad news, it's just the news that I think we all have to come to the realization that what we got left is not a lot as far as development goes, and we should be cautious how we do it. And, you know, I think one of the secrets we've had is the development we've had, added in the last 20 years, has been stuff that generates a lot of taxes. And so we've been able to support additional staff and do things in the city, and if you didn't have that money coming in, you know, I'm not convinced that in the next couple of years, the state of Illinois or the federal government is going to be in a position to hand off a lot of money. There's a lot of people that are saying, well, they're spending it all now, but just wait a couple of years and you're going to see- wait a couple of years, and you're going to see how much they really have to still share. So I just share all that with you as some vision of where the folks downtown are thinking it's happening, and we're in one of the cities, what one planner in it, CMAP, described as the, he said the tri cities, Batavia, Geneva, and St. Charles, that's the region of envy, that everybody wishes they could be like us and have this, have the school test scores and have all the record of public safety and all the growth and all the increasing EAV and value and the values of property, that we, we're doing something right here, I guess, in the rest of, in the eyes of the rest of the world. So the city council, every now and then, I like to have a kind of a, you know, a public discussion with you about what the world's saying and doing, and this seems to be something that we're, we're doing now. Tonight, I'll be anxious to see what the reaction to the proclamation on the, that we just passed is, but that's fine, it's the council's decision, and we will work in it and try to make it work. There's nothing really for us to do other than pass on the resolution, but, you know, at the end of the day, we should be somewhat pleased that we've got what we got here. So I end on that note, and thank you all for coming. Somebody care to make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Take a quick break and start the council meeting at nine.